Welcome to the July 2 regular board meeting of the Mount Vernon City School District. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee McDonough?
Here.
Trustee Marable?
Present.
Trustee Mitchell?
Present.
Trustee Middleton?
Present.
Trustee Engenga?
Here.
Trustee White?
Present.
Trustee Kerwin?
Here.
VP Kelly?
Here.
And President Saunders?
Here.
We have a quorum. So we'll have a communication from the public.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education, however, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the Board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at (914) 665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes or respects our comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak; up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, Board trustee and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remark.
Our first speaker tonight is Brenda Miles. Brenda Miles?
I reside at 150 South Fifth Avenue in Mount Vernon, New York, and I just have some concerns. Okay, it is my understanding that the superintendent is still being paid, and when I say "understanding", I stand to be corrected, and I'm saying that publicly is because I'm basing everything on what I heard and not what I know, okay? I just want y'all to understand that. So it is my understanding that the superintendent is still being paid while under investigation for misappropriation of funds. Also, I understand that the reason for this is because she's still under contract. I would like to know how long will this superintendent have to be paid, and how long will this investigation take? It is also my understanding that the administration, whoever they were, were giving raises, and teachers, food service workers, and security guards, and those who work in the trenches without children were not given any raise. In the climate of what's going on within this district, no one should be given raises until your financial -- finances become stabilized and the overspending concerning people getting paid without working, such as a superintendent, stops. Why is it that a superintendent who is under investigation allowed to still get paid? And who drew up a contract that one can be investigated, get paid without any accountability? I realize that some of the trustees came on board after the fact, but there is evidence that the school board needs to evaluate what their power, authority, and responsibility they possess in the district. If you have legal counsel that will allow you to enter into a contract with anyone without a liability clause, then your legal counsel needs to be fired. Something must be done because too much taxpayer money is being wasted. I strongly suggest that the Board do a self-examination of what your authority and your responsibilities are so that the district can operate without losing so much, and I'm stressing "losing so much" because as far as personnel is concerned and money is concerned, this district is losing a great deal. You may not take my suggestion, but I strongly suggest that you evaluate who you are. You're in charge. The superintendent is not in charge. Your counsel is not in charge. You are in charge, and the responsibility of what's going on in this district, whether right or wrong, lies with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Miles.
Cynthia Crenshaw?
Cynthia Crenshaw, Monday Lane, Mount Vernon. My first question is, how many times can a board member become president? Because it seems like the friends up there are just peen-ponging back and forth between presidents and vice president. Is there a limit for that? I guess you can answer that question when you answer the question at the next hearing, but they just peen-pong back and forth with that title. And I thought I seen on the board doc that there was going to be some title changes. Is there any money involved with these title changes? I guess you're going to have to answer that the next time. Another thing I seen at the last meeting, I think it was 12.1, 12.2, and 12.3, where you were looking to increase your salaries. No one should get a raise until our teachers receive their raise. How dare you give these raises, and the teachers is here fighting for a raise? I understand that the lawyer received a raise, and he was here less than a year and received a $10,000 raise. Teachers was here for 30, 25 years. What did they receive? They did not receive anything, and how could this person, being here just less than a year, get such a healthy raise? That is ridiculous. And also going forward, we are going to over a half a million dollars with the trustee, with the superintendent home and the acting superintendent, plus these lawyers. It is ridiculous. 100 teachers has resigned, and 30 to 40 of our seasoned teachers retired. I see on the budget, if I'm corrected, BOSI's, which is, I think, special ed, that they're -- they dropped down to $8,000 from 13,500. Why is that? Another thing with the budget, I see on the overtime for the assistant superintendent and her group, they are going from $1,000 to $10,000. Why? Why are we paying overtime for the superintendent and her team? I'm pulling this from your budget. Attorney salaries, ridiculous. $160,000, you go into $290,000. Why is contracted services so high? $813,000 to $1,178,000. Sick incentive stipend, that's $3,000, going down to zero. I wanted to ask you about the clerical salaries. I see that the salary is going up and it's going down. For an example, extension for civil costs or maintenance and operation system. Williams School, $5,000, and then they go into $10,000. Why is that? If they need fixing up, whatever, I can understand that. Mount Vernon High School, $1,000,000 to $152,000. Those are custodian salaries. What else is with this budget? I wish you would've put the page number on the budget so you could probably follow me, but I guess you did not do that. And the furniture district-wise, did you speak to the principals? Because I guess for this year, you had zero, and now some of them got $12,000, $11,000, $10,000. I'm just concerned about our money, how you doing the money. There's so much other stuff, but again, nobody should get a raise until the teachers get a raise. And could you please explain to me at the next meeting, how did this lawyer, who's been here less than a year, receive a $10,000 raise? No one should receive a raise until our teachers is taken care of. And what are you guys eating tonight? Filet mignon?
Thank you, Ms. Crenshaw.
Because I have to go to McDonald's for the $5 menu, and I see on the budget for you guys for the meals is $7,000.
Thank you so much. Have a good day. Who's next? Tom Keller? Is Mr. Keller here?
All right, thank you.
That's it?
That's it for public comments.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
I just want to congratulate the new president of the Board, Andrea Sandras, Adrian Sandras.
She's only known me 50 years.
That's right. I would like to congratulate the vice president of the Board, Sabina Kelly, and our new -- I wanted to start with the student trustee. What is your name again?
Elizabeth DeGrampy.
Elizabeth DeGrampy, congratulations.
She's from Lincoln.
From Lincoln. Dr. McDonough, I would like to congratulate you as well. Wanda White, congratulate you as well. I also want to say congratulations again to Donna Marable. Congratulations. And Helene, I would like to congratulate you as well. Rita, congratulations to your appointment. Thank you, everyone, for your continued work. I know it's hard. Before I conclude, I would like to thank Lorna Kerwin for her service. Thank you so very much. She did an amazing job as the board president. Hate to see you leave, but you're still with us, okay? She's not going anywhere. Thank you so much.
So committee reports. Since we have a new year, we're going to establish some new committees, okay? So, Education Committee, who wants to be on the Education Committee?
Are we going to do that now? Are we going to do that now? Or we should submit?
We should submit.
Is that what you want to do? Okay, because I thought we wanted to establish some committee reports, no?
I think we should submit it.
Okay.
Then it's fine.
Okay, no problem. Follow-up on old business, Dr. Smith?
Madam President, can I just ask for a list of all those committees in order to know which ones to submit for? Thank you.
Trustee Marable, I'm giving you that list in exec. Okay, in regards to old business, a question was raised, how do teachers and principals get tenured? Is there a list of things they should do? Teachers and principals are hired for four years. During the four years, they should receive effective evaluations. At the conclusion of the four years, if they are effective, they receive tenure. In regards to what do they need to do, typically, all individuals that's hired have a job description, and there's expectations, and based on those expectations, that's how they are evaluated. In terms, we use what's called the Danielson model, and that's how they evaluate it, and hopefully, they get a favorable evaluation and they become tenured. Why did we take $129,000 from the teachers' line and move it to legal? The $129,000 from the teachers' line was not used this year. Since the expenditure for legal was unbudgeted, it was much more than was budgeted for, the monies from the teacher line was transferred over to cover the legal expenses. Why are we paying legal so much money? We are paying so much in legal bills to address lawsuits, civil cases, personnel matters, special ed matters, district challenges, et cetera. Are you going to continue taking money from the teachers' line? So at the end of the year, in the business department, they look at what remains and what is unpaid, and they balance the budget. So in regards to the teachers' line, it depends on what's left in the teachers' line. When you don't feel teachers positioned, that money's left in the line, and if, for example, another area like transportation, charter schools, if they need funding, the money would shift to those lines. So do you listen to teachers when they come up to speak at the podium? Yes, I listen to those teachers. What line is the food budget on? In our -- there's a budget line for the food, and just so you know, we get reimbursement for food, and so unlike some of the other areas, that line, once we submit it, we get a return on some of them. $4.5 million was moved from reserve to the balance, the budget, for this year. Is this because of overspend by 4.5? This is because some areas, like I said, was underbudgeted, such as charter school and transportation, so the additional monies was to cover those expenses. You know, as we get schools, students moving over to charter schools, and special ed students taking the bus, or homeless students taking the bus, there's additional cost to that. Is it a timing issue, or are we waiting for more money from Albany? We're not waiting for any more money from Albany. We were very grateful that we were able to keep the budget in our account, but we're not waiting for any additional monies from Albany. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We're going to move on to our resolutions. Have a motion for 5.1, approval to change titles at Central Office for reorganization.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Ayes.
Ayes.
Three of you?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.2, approval to establish temporary September 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, pay for certified and uncertified substitute teachers.
Motion.
Second.
I got it. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.3, Human Resources 107A, certified? Motion. Need a second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.4, approval of Human Resources Resolution, non-certified?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.1, amend resolution 9.3, Board approve from June 4, 2024, authorization to hire staff for the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.1, authorization to hire additional staff for the summer school for K to 6 students from July 8 to August 1, 2024.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, authorization to hire administrators for the 2024 McKinney Vento College Summers College and Career Enrichment Program.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.2, approval of Student Services-Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 1 dated July 2, 2024. Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yeah, this is the one I was bringing up. Just want to make sure, who approved the IP's? Is that -- who approved all the IP's for this motion for this resolution?
The supervisors approve the IP's. Whoever is the meeting chair approves the IP's after the teachers write them.
So the supervisor?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.3, approval of medical staff for summer 2024 sports physicals.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1, authorization to reject bid 2024-25-03, electrical installation and repair services.
Motion.
Second.
Question?
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Just understand why we're rejecting the bid? Should be similar.
So we're rejecting the bid because it came in very, very high, so we thought it in the best interest of the district to put it back out to bid to get better pricing for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.2, approval to dispose of unusable machines from attached lists.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.1, authorization to complete budget transfers for the 23-24 fiscal year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Should there have been an attachment here for this to show those transfers?
They're anticipated. They're working on it.
So this is an authorization in advance to complete transfers that we haven't put together yet?
They're working on it.
Will we see them before they're actually passed? Will we see, in other words, will we see future resolutions when they're done?
Yes.
Okay.
This is to close out the year 23-24.
Does rationalize it?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.2, authorization for placement of coverage for the 24-25 fiscal year with Affleck New York to provide extended health coverage.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.3, authorization to appoint Capital Market Advisors LLC as fiscal advisors during the 24-25 fiscal year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Just want to confirm, I'm sorry, can I ask that question? I want to just make sure there was no RFP that was needed for this? This is just us continuing business?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.4, authorization to continue agreement with Aramark Food Service Management for the 24-25 school year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Mr. Ramondi, we've been in conversations with superintendent and food service director regarding Aramark service. There's been emails sent. We know that they've been under service in the district for the entire school year. Is the reason we're renewing this contract because we just passed the window to cancel that contract, or do we really feel that they've actually done something good for the district?
It was a window timing issue.
Because we're paying them, I believe, $4.5 million is the budget for the year they get Aramark's paid, not from us, comes from various sources, but it's $4.5 million they get paid a year, right?
Correct. The federal government sends us money, and we send it off to Aramark, but again, it's -- there's never a loss with food service, so there's always -- it's a profitable.
Unless we're fined for things, and when we're out of compliance and things like that, then we run that risk, right?
True, but the food service vendor takes the liability off of the district, so as long as we're doing our due diligence, there's that buffer between the two.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.5, authorization to appoint Orrick Heron and Sue Cliff as bond counsel during the 24-25 fiscal year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.6, appoint EFPR Group, CPAs, PLLC as external auditor requested request for proposal number 2022-23-06.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.7, authorization to hire Inverosience to support facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
What? Oppose and you abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.8, authorization to continue contract with KGND Architects to serve as district architect for the 24, 25 fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. A motion for 10.9, authorize Seneca Consultant Inc. for administrative and financial consultation services in connection with the Affordable Care Act for the 24, 25 fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Just confirm, this is not the first time we've used it. We've been using them for the same purpose prior, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Continuing the service.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. A motion for 10.10, authorize PMA Management Corp. for claims handling services.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Just wanna confirm, I'm sorry, can I ask that question? I wanna just make sure there was no RFP that was needed for this? This is just us continuing business?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.11, approve the settlement tax proceedings for Fulton Acquisition LLC.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
I abstain.
Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.12, authorization to pay other school districts for health and related services for the 24, 25 school year.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Can we have an understanding what those health and related services that are coming from other school districts are, as well as the dollar amount? Is that a certain attachment here?
Dr. Gavelsa?
I thought this was fixed.
Not to see, this was not supposed to exceed, what was it, 600,000? And it's like $8 and change per student.
Where is that at? Where is that?
At the top, in the resolution. 600,000, the last line.
Oh, I see. Okay. $8 more?
First student.
We have a couple additional students who need nurses. So as a result, the price has gone up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.1, authorize an amended contract agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Jamal Dargit effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. What, what does the timeframe that this contract covers to, what year?
I'm sorry. What is the timeframe that this contract covers to? Because it looks like it says through 2028.
It's 2026.
That's not what the document attached says.
It was updated. Maybe, did you need to refresh? I don't know if it's.
Again?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's 26.
All right, I'm gonna refresh, because I just signed on.
Recognition, action, is it?
Hold on.
It's in there.
Good and well. 11.1? One moment. It says, it says effective July 1, shall be extended to include academic years 26, 27, 27, 28.
Do you have a?
Yeah. It doesn't say that. It's right here.
Sure, so it says anything my says?
Extension.
Says it's through 28, on, on what I'm looking at. So how some of us seeing one thing and some of us are not seeing that?
You refresh. It's only for, it's only for one year.
I just, I just did it, I'll do it again.
It's mine.
No, I'd rather see it on my own.
You're looking at the back. Yeah, she's just talking about.
Right, I'm talking, I need the backup. For me, it's the, it's the backup, that's what I need to see. I'm gonna refresh again. I'm gonna log out.
I see down here. Is that on? Wait, it's, it's on the board.
It's there?
Yeah, it's on the board.
I'm looking at the actual document, though. I'm, the attached document is what I'm paying attention to.
Extension of the agreement is what.
Yeah, I'm looking at that. That's what, I'm driving, because this, that's one thing, but what's actually attached is what means the backup should support what's being said on those words.
Okay, that's for me.
Can we pull it? Thank you.
Okay.
Have a motion to pull 11.1.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, authorization to hire administrators for the 2024 McKinnon Ventus College Summers College and Career Enrichment Program.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yeah, this is the one I was bringing up. Just wanna make sure, who approved the IP's? Is that, who approved all the IP's for this, for this resolution?
So the supervisors?
The supervisors approve the IP's. Whoever is the meeting chair approves the IP's after the teachers write them.
So the supervisors?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1, authorization to reject, to reject bid 2024-25-03, electrical installation and repair services.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.4, authorization to continue contract with KGND Architects to serve as district architect for the 24, 25 fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Jessica Graves effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Thorp Farley effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Thorp Farley effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.2, authorization to dispose of unusable, unusable machines from attached list.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. What, what does the timeframe that this contract covers to, what year?
I'm sorry. What is the timeframe that this contract covers to? Because it looks like it says through 2028.
It's 2026.
That's not what the document attached says.
It was updated. Maybe, did you need to refresh? I don't know if it's.
Again?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's 26.
All right, I'm gonna refresh, because I just signed on.
Recognition, action, is it?
Hold on.
It's in there.
Good and well. 11.1? One moment. It says, it says effective July 1, shall be extended to include academic years 26, 27, 27, 28.
Do you have a?
Yeah. It doesn't say that. It's right here.
Sure, so it says anything my says?
Extension.
Says it's through 28, on, on what I'm looking at. So how some of us seeing one thing and some of us are not seeing that?
You refresh. It's only for, it's only for one year.
I just, I just did it, I'll do it again.
It's mine.
No, I'd rather see it on my own.
You're looking at the back. Yeah, she's just talking about.
Right, I'm talking, I need the backup. For me, it's the, it's the backup, that's what I need to see. I'm gonna refresh again. I'm gonna log out.
I see down here. Is that on? Wait, it's, it's on the board.
It's there?
Yeah, it's on the board.
I'm looking at the actual document, though. I'm, the attached document is what I'm paying attention to.
Extension of the agreement is what.
Yeah, I'm looking at that. That's what, I'm driving, because this, that's one thing, but what's actually attached is what means the backup should support what's being said on those words.
Okay, that's for me.
Can we pull it? Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion to pull 11.1.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We're gonna pull 11.1.
Sign it on the screen.
Have a motion for 11.2.
Motion.
11.2, authorization to, authorize a contract extension with MJ Communications.
Motion.
Second.
Who's MJ? Who's it?
That's our communications. That's the person that does our communications for the district.
They go through between Channel 12 and the district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.3, authorize an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Jessica, Jessica Graves effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We're gonna pull 11.1.
Sign it on the screen.
Have a motion for 11.2.
Motion.
11.2, authorization to, authorize a contract extension with MJ Communications.
Motion.
Second.
Who's MJ? Who's it?
That's our communications. That's the person that does our communications for the district.
They go through between Channel 12 and the district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.3, authorize an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Thorp Farley effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Just understand why we're rejecting the bid? It should be similar.
So we're rejecting the bid because it came in very, very high. So we thought in the best interest of the district to put it back out to bid to get better pricing for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.2, authorization to dispose of unusable, unusable machines from attached list.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.2, authorization to reject, to reject bid 2024-25-03, electrical installation and repair services.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.2, authorization to reject, to reject bid 2024-25-03, electrical installation and repair services.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.2, authorization to reject, to reject bid 2024-25-03, electrical installation and repair services.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Abstain. Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Thorp Farley effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Abstain. Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Thorp Farley effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Thorp Farley effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Thorp Farley effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Abstain.
I got Mitchell, Lynn, who else?
Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.5, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Michael Thompson effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Excuse me.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.6, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Sheila Solomon effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
I have a question. Are these contracts with cost of living increase?
There's no money.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.6, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Michael Thompson effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Excuse me.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
I have a question.
Are these contracts with cost of living increase?
There's no money.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.6, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Sheila Solomon effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
I have a question. Are these contracts with cost of living increase?
There's no money.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.6, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Sheila Solomon effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Second. Excuse me.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question, is this a permanent or probationary position? 11.7 is an annual. It's not a permanent, that's an exact position. It says probationary.
It says probationary in the attachment?
Then you can go, if it's not a probationary.
I think it's the way the contract was written.
It's pointed to a probationary position.
There you go.
I'm sorry. It says the employee agrees and acknowledges.
That's 11.7?
That's 11.6?
Yeah. Is it 6 or 7?
This one's, we're on 6.
Oh, I'm ahead of myself. She, it is probation, but she, she's permanent.
So she gets an annual contract?
She's a, she's a permanent employee.
I'm just trying to understand how she's permanent, but it says probationary. Is that going hand in hand?
Can't do some things at the time.
How can that be the same?
Who's still in the contracts?
Yeah, that's what I think. It just needs to not say probationary. It should be permanent. Because it says she's provisional. It doesn't even say she's.
Provisional.
It doesn't say she's permanent. Probationary.
I think, I think we need to pull this for discussion. Can we?
Yeah, let's pull it.
Can we pull it, please? Motion?
Have a motion to pull 11, oh, wait. Do you have something, Noel?
No. I was just saying, pull it. We could pull it, so it's fine, but that employee has been here forever, so, but we could pull it and edit. We change the wording. All right.
Excellent, Noel, good idea.
Have a motion to pull 11.6.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.7, authorization to employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Sasha Gay Harris effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Second. Somebody's second already?
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.8, settlement agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and employee number 345.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 12.1, to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, motion carries. We are in executive session.
We will not be coming back tonight from exec, Dr. Smith?
If we can clarify.
We're gonna clarify some of the resolutions that were pulled, and we'll come back. So we won't return back from exec. Thank you.